Our first order of business would be approval of the September invoices. If everyone's had a moment to look at them, we'll get started. For the record, Mr. Wiseman, Mr. Moran, and Ms. Nizel are not present. Motion for the invoice?
I'll make a motion, we approve the September invoices.
Motion by Mr. Solsky.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mifflin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion is approved. Next item of business is the approval of the September 13th, 2018 minutes. Any corrections?
Not, we'll take a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Mifflin. Second by Mr. Caldwell. Hey Jeff, how you doing? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed. Motion approved. Approval of the October agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the October agenda.
Motion by Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chairman, we've got a couple items to add.
No. Okay, what you got?
We can do it now. There, uh, the first one is an agreement with GMWSS to do some improvements at Edgewater subdivision.
So it can be like C?
Uh, that, that's the item C, yeah.
And the other business?
Yeah, under the.
Edgewater?
Yep. And the second thing is an acceptance of an out-of-state letter of credit. That would be item.
Out of P. Stephen, you gonna do your motion with those corrections?
Yes.
So we have a motion by Mr. Smith with the two additions.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Caldwell. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed. Motion approved. Items for postponement withdrawal. We do have two that are postponed. PSP 2018-42 and PDP-2018-43, Emerson North Town Homes has been postponed. And PDP 2018-51, Emerson Property amended concept plan has been postponed. So if you hear, those won't be heard tonight. Next item of business be the consent agenda. Joe, what do we have for consent?
I believe we have two items under new business, item A and item B. And then we discussed at workshop, item D has two variances, two landscape variances. If you're okay with the variances, that could be. But item A and item B.
Item A is SP 2018-49, it's the Humphreys property. It's a final subdivision plat to divide one tract into three tracts, creating one 5.11 acre tract, one 5.01 acre tract, and a 37 acre remainder tract located at 4476 Frankfurt Road. Is anyone here to speak against that application? If no one's here to speak against the Humphreys property application, we'll take a motion for consent.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved that we accept Humphreys property, FSP 2018-49 by consent.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Solsky. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed. Motion approved. Is anyone here for that application? If you can come up and sign your papers, please. Next application considered for consent is FSP-2018-50, Party Miller property, a final subdivision plat to divide one tract into four tracts, creating two five acre tracts, one 6.23 acre tract, and a 34 acre remainder tract located at 3159 Newtown Pike. Is anyone here to speak out against that? Is it, uh... Okay, we'll just hear the application then. Our next one that is considered for consent is PDP 2018-52, 121 South Gate Drive. It's a preliminary development plan to construct a 5,100 square foot commercial building with two units located at 121 South Gate Drive. It does have two variances. Is anyone here to speak out against that application?
If not, I think we can take that with those two variances.
I'll make a motion to approve PDP 2018-52, 121 South Gate Drive with inclusive of the two variances.
Motion by Mr. Solsky. Second by Mr. Caldwell. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed. Motion approved. Is applicant here for that application? So our first application we'll be hearing is PSP 2018-46, Harbor Village Phase 3. Charlie, you wanna swear by it in now?
Yes, everyone signed in to speak. If you could stand, raise your right hand, please. Those signed in to speak. Did you all sign in to speak?
Yeah, if you're gonna speak, so have anything to say about application, just, it's a little swearing thing we have to do.
Yeah, do you swear affirm the statement you made tonight to be the truth to the best of your information and belief? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, the first application tonight is PSP 2018-46, this is an amended preliminary subdivision plat, Harbor Village Phase 3, and approval of an amendment to the overall master plan. The project is on Route 25 Miller at Rogers Gap. It's a subdivision started in the late eighties, down to Mallard Point. This is the location of the area we're looking at tonight, Phase 3. There is an additional area behind it. It was shown on one of the early master plans as Phase 3. This is all kind of Phase 3 in the back. That additional land that's not part of the, of the plan that's planned for tonight. This is the built-out area of Harbor Village in the front, and that's Mallard Point to the north. The project is a long, longstanding subdivision, started as I said in the early eighties. First phase was built out in the nineties. Phase two, with the original application to master plan, there were three lakes to be built. There was this lake in the front, there was a second lake that was shown as Phase 2, and then there was a third plain lake in the very rear. Phase one was built with the, with the original lake. There's actually also a multifamily area north of that lake. I never had any activity on it, but it's still zoned with a multifamily. First phase had the lake built. Developer came back in the early 2000s for Phase 2, and they amended the master plan, brought it to the planning commission. The planning commission approved an amendment to the master plan and took rid of that lake in Phase 2. So this lake went away and became common area, just open space for subdivisions. As part of that, there was a master plan amendment to take out that lake. That amendment showed, still showed a lake in the back, in the undeveloped area, and showed the lake, the proposed lot. It's a general layout, road layout as undeveloped. In 2005, preliminary plat was brought to the planning commission, was approved for Phase, the end of Phase 2, some lots in the back of Phase 2 and the beginning of Phase 3. So it was these eighty, roughly eighty lots around this lake, which was still shown to be built. So the planning commission approved that preliminary plat. The roads were built in this loop, so this lake shore circle, and these lots were all platted. Houses built, purchased, and people came out. These are now largely built out, there's still some empty. But this phase went to construction and final plat. The rest of the subdivision, nothing happened on, can never extend Harbor Village Drive. So this, that remained, it's just a preliminary approval. In 2012, the bank took back that back portion of property. There was a buyer that wanted to buy a section of it and wanted to do away with the proposed lots and just, just put, he said at the time, just split it maximum of three rural tracts. So it's, uh, total acreage, roughly, uh, whatever it is, 30 acres. In the, in the A1 zone, you can split, as you know, property into five acre tracts, but only three tracts can be served by a easement, private driveway. So they proposed maximum of three rural tracts to be served by an extension of an easement off the existing roads. Planning commission approved that and approved the amended 2012 master plan to take out the smaller lots in this area. One of the conditions that was placed on it at that time is that they come back and rebuild it to A1 before the change in the master plan was officially approved. They never did that, that, um, there were some residents that lived out there that sued the planning commission to overturn that decision. I believe they wanted the lake to be built, they thought, well, they, they bought, thinking that there was going to be a lake back there. It went to certi court and beyond, I believe, but, uh, the planning commission ended up winning that case. So the, the decision was upheld, so the preliminary plat and the master plan change was upheld. That's where we were up until just recently. So a new buyer's come in and bought these two parcels. They want to rescind that previous approval of the amended master plan and go back to essentially the 2005 preliminary subdivision plat layout with minor modifications. Essentially removing the lake still, but, but plating lots in the same general configuration as, as was approved in 2005. I just, I already covered this, but I just wanted to make notes that one condition on that master plan from 2012 is that they come back and zone the property A1, so it would stay rural perpetuity, or they would have to come back through a zone change process. That never happened, so I think technically the master plan change never happened. Although this applicant would still have to come to you regardless, because they want to, um, remove that lake also and have to figure the proposed lots a little bit differently. So anyway, that's how we got here. So they're submitting a preliminary plat for this Phase 3 and proposing beyond that, since the master plan shows lots in the rear, we've asked them to come back and with a, a new master plan drawing, when they get, if they were to develop anything beyond this, this section, because that, that layout might change, because there's been changes to Mallard Point. Mallard Point's actually sold off some of their rear period of land, so that connection may not be possible anymore with Mallard Point. So we've asked them to come back, sort of, beyond this phase. Generally, we're not opposed to this layout, since this is what was approved originally, this general layout. And we don't believe that this lake is really feasible, there's, I mean, all the steps you'd have to go through to get an arbor foreman's year approval, and the size of the lake that they were showing is, uh, it shrunk to more of a large pond rather than a useful lake. And I don't believe the HOA is, is opposed to the removal of lake at this time, so, um, we're not opposed. I think the two, um, concern, not concern so much, but the two comments that we would have and that we've asked the applicant to address is this, once the lake went away, they, they proposed this, this lot here that was common area for the lake to be a buildable lot. I think we would rather see this area be common, open space, remain open space. If that was the original plan, that's kind of what happened in Phase 2 when the lake went away. They become, became common area, become a part of a buildable lot. General, the lot layout is following the previous phases as far as lot widths and sizes. The zoning out there is R1C, that allows for a minimum lot width of 70 feet, minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet if you're on sewer. These lot sizes are roughly, the average, the minimum frontage proposed is 75 feet, so five feet over what the minimum would be. The average that they're showing is 70, roughly 79 foot of frontage. The average lot size, I believe it's a little over half an acre. So generally, the lot sizes and widths match the previous phases, what was originally approved. The road, Harbor Village and Lakeside Drive, the road width and profile's a little bit different than, than what our current standard is for an urban subdivision. This is kind of an urban density, but out in the county. So they were granted a waiver in the earlier phases to allow 24-foot drive paved road in a 60-foot right-of-way, so 24-foot pavement with shoulders and dishes. Our urban standard is 26 with curves, so this isn't much narrower than our, than our in-city urban road profile. 12-foot drive lanes are more than adequate for a local road. So we're okay with the, um, with the variance for our standards, just because this is something that is common to see. We don't really allow in our current conference and plan, new large rural subdivisions anywhere. This is kind of what's left over approved in eighties. So we don't, we don't have a problem with the, with the width, but you would, we'll have to grant a waiver with this phase to match up with the roads that are out there. It's other issues, we ask for a turnaround at the end of the street, since it's, the length of it is greater than we'd allow with the turnaround, and we typically require either permanent or temporary turnaround when the street stubs out to a future phase. So we're asking for a turnaround at the end of the subdivision. Also ask for a landscape buffer, a tree preservation buffer, between the lots in this new phase and the old, and the previous phase with houses already constructed, just so that that existing vegetation is maintained to provide some screening between these new houses and the houses that were already there. The only really other issue that we don't necessarily have an answer for, but this, this proposed drainage area, stormwater drainage area, and this isn't finalized, it's a size that we need to handle all the drainage, because the pipe under the road isn't sized yet. But typically, in the county, we'd like to see, and even in the city, it's possible to see the detention area, the stormwater areas off the individual lots, just for maintenance issues, the HOA or whoever's in charge of maintenance of this area. It's easier if it's on a lot they own, rather than it's easement across another owner's lot. That way, there's no conflict with the maintenance down the road. So that's truly the only other issue. We are recommending approval. It follows the general layout of the originally approved subdivision. We have added, I think, 15 conditions of approval. Those are essentially our standard preliminary subdivision conditions. I've added a few that are unique to this subdivision. One is that, condition number two, the number of lots in the preliminary plat should reduce to a maximum of 44 buildable lots. And how we got that number is, the statistics said there's 45 lots, although the applicant reminded workshop that there's actually 46 in the county, but I took away the common area and just left the remainder lots. So kind of capped it at that, so this would be the known kind of number of lots that would be platted eventually. So that's unique to this kind of development, it's based on the number of lots that are there minus the common area lot. Number three, the lot 80, as I mentioned, should be, I would prefer to see that as common area rather than as buildable flag lots off the street. And then number five, submit a master plan for the overall for development, if there's any continuing development beyond Phase 3. And I guess number seven also, asking for a minimum tree protection buffer along the back of the lots that join the existing subdivision. And I put that as a 50-foot, but, I mean, I think 50 would be the minimum in order to get a good standard tree protected. I, I guess in the, and the only other additional issue with the HOA, this is a continuation of an existing subdivision. I think it'd probably be better if this joined, these lots were made to join the existing HOA, if that's practical. I know there might be, um, details in the existing covenants and restrictions that would make that difficult, but I think if possible, it'd be better if this HOA, these lots join the existing HOA rather than create another HOA that might conflict or be funded differently than, than the one that's out there. Comes with the maintenance of the open space down the road. So we are recommending approval with the 15 conditions, the ones I outlined in the other standard conditions. Open to questions?
Anyone have any questions?
Joe, number seven, a minimum 50-foot tree preservation buffer, is that from the back of the lot? Or what is, what's the 50-foot?
From the back of the lot.
Okay.
So about 50 feet of the lot.
So the buffer line will not be a straight line, it'd be jagged to coincide with the location of the backs of the lots?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Does that, does that count that trail in there, Joe, or no?
No, the trail is separate.
Be separated.
They're gonna need the, a trail connection along the back of the lot, so it would be beyond the trail.
Okay, so the trail plus 50 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
Will that just be one tree per lot, or?
No, it's, um, it's pretty well wooded, I don't know if it's completely wooded along the whole length, but most of it is wooded. It would be just to protect that tree line, so the buyer of that lot couldn't come in and take out all the trees or put a shed back there, like clear and larger.
Oh, that's leaving existing trees, not planting new trees. Gotcha, thank you.
And we're at 45 lots, not 44. I counted 45.
I guess there's 45.
Yeah, you got it 45 on the first page, and then on the conditions, you got 44.
Yeah, I was counting lot 80 when I got the 45 numbers. With lot 80, it was 46, so I saved away lot 8.
So that's 45, that's what we consider, okay. Anyone else have any questions? Not, we'll hear from the applicant.
Can I approach Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, presentation made, but this way you got a paper copy that if you want to go back to a slide I've already presented, you can make reference to it or circle or make funny marks or make comments or things.
Yes?
Mr. Chairman? Members of the planning commission, my name is Nathan Bill. I'm a member of the Lawrence Law Department at Lexington. It's my pleasure to represent the applicant's plan judgment, pardon me, with respect to its application for an amended preliminary subdivision plat for Harbor Village Phase 3. By and large, I just got a short presentation tonight, I've been here for, it's a little big and wordy, but not hope not to be that way. We are in vast majority group, everything that Joe said, the staff who passed, the two sections will come to the end, and even those things are very minor. It's just quick history. So it looks like it's working on the laptop. There we go. So this does have a varied history, going all the way back into the 1980s. We've actually gone back and pulled all the planning files, records, which are all listed. And I was surprised to learn that Mr. Burkin was to practice the law back in the eighties, at that point in time, as Secretary of the Planning Commission did. But this was originally done as three plats came together, three properties came together. That was rezoned, an R1C and R3. As Mr. Kent pointed out, R3 has never been developed in the sort of northeast corner of this property. The remainder of it was to be divided into recreational common areas like the lake, green spaces, and R1C residential areas. We could not find an original density calculation on the R1C area. In fact, there's actually a note that says that the density will actually be determined at the time. at the time of subsequent phases of development but obviously the R one C has a built-in density calculation. It did have three lakes originally and it contemplated having up to a hundred and eight acres of common area which is lakes, trails, open spaces along the whole three other seven acre tract. The planning note, this is one I found in the file, actually notes that Lake Three, which is one of the lakes that Mr. Kane referenced in his presentation, is small and not a major feature. I emphasize that in my quote, but the staff made a note at that time that while there were three lakes proposed, this was the smallest and least significant of the lakes in the property and that the main lake being the one right off of twenty-five is the feature of the property, like the one in Victoria Estates, which at that time was called Lake Elkhorn, and like the one in Mallard Point, that this lake is actually twice the size of Mallard Point. Based upon the zoning calculations, it could have had up to three hundred and fifty-four lots but we never could actually find an actual reference in the planning documents to a actual density at the time. In nineteen eighty-eight, a couple months later, the first phase of development was put forward. That was to have a hundred and nineteen lots on forty acres. Largely from then, phase one sort of gets tilted out from the late eighties until the early two thousands. So, it takes about twelve, fourteen years for the first hundred and twenty or so houses to actually get platted and sold. In two thousand and two, a preliminary subdivision plat for phase two was approved and this initially included thirty-five lots and phase two was later expanded. And this one actually proposed removing that second lake in the middle that Mr. Kane showed you was previously approved. So, there's precedent already for the minor lakes being removed inside of Harbor Village because they're not significant features for the property along the lines of what staff noted back in nineteen eighty-eight. In two thousand and four, another amended master plan came forward. It's again referenced the elimination of lake number two. It still showed lake number three however, and that plan also increased phase two for a total of eighty-five lots. You'll see how sort of they sort of stair step along. And in two thousand and four, there's actually, it's sort of unique, I've never seen this in Scott County before, but there's an amended master plan for all of Harbor Village and Mallard Point together. It's one that's unusual. I've never seen sort of two developments merged and there's a, that master plan has a huge map of everything and it has a sub map of just Harbor Village. And that map notes that there are three hundred and nineteen single-family lots intended in Harbor Village. And I'm gonna come back and show why that number's important in a minute. Specifically, they noted a hundred and thirty-three single-family lots in phases three and phases four. So, this is the snippet of the much broader plan that was consolidated with Mallard Point at the time. And you see right here, there's a little connection point at that in two thousand and four where it was intended to be connected to Mallard Point. And you'll see here, this is the, at least in two thousand and four, the design of lake three. This is where lake two was had already been removed and it would have been a bridge roadway through here to over the dam. Subsequent to this, in August two thousand and five, yeah, actually in April and May of two thousand and five, the applicant came back and wanted to remove the lake number three and asked for eighty-five lots. There was a hearing in April of two thousand and five that was continued, there was a hearing in May of two thousand and five and the application was denied. The record reflects that a number of homeowners came and talked about the lake. The, there's other issues inside of that plan but ultimately the planning commission said, "No, we're not gonna approve this plan." Two months later, the applicant comes back and the planning file really just references the prior staff reports and the applicant reduces the number of lots in this plan from eighty-five down to eighty. And he puts lake three back in and although it's a smaller design than what was in the two thousand and four master plan, the planning commission approves it, so it has eighty lots. Thirty-eight of those are in phase two, which is now completed, and forty-two of those would have been in phase three. And it also added a pedestrian trail that has never been completed and what are aspects of our plan is we want to finish that out for Harbor Village. So, this is the two thousand and five plan as approved. You'll see here, the lake is actually not the exact same size if you look at, if I go back to this plan here, the two thousand and four. You'll see the road sort of comes along the property boundaries right here. The road pushes up closer to the property boundary and these single-family lots actually would come over into the next farm. And the lake is a little bit longer, that was in two thousand and four. And then in two thousand and five plan, you'll see how the road is actually pushed in just a little bit and all the single-family lots are longer. This is essentially the same plan that we are proposing now except for the lake is being removed, is not part of the plan. And all of these lots are now extended back to the property line, and these lots are extended back to the property line. Other than that, it's very, very similar other than some minor nuances. So, the planning commission approved that in two thousand and five and platted for eighty lots in this area. In the total area of phase two and phase three, phase three would have had forty-two lots. Two thousand and twelve, then a master plan came back. Mr. Kane made reference to a required zone change. I think the minutes reflect that they agreed to suspend the prior preliminary plan but and they discussed a zone change could be necessary but it wasn't actually in the motion to approve. But I think it was contemplated that an A-one zoning could be appropriate if, if an owner wanted to keep it as a single lot or as three agricultural tracts in the future. What is clear and we agree with Mr. Kane is that following that hearing, which, which removed the lake and reduced it to one lot, the, two of the neighbors who objected, Mr. Isaacs and Ms. Cornett I believe, filed an appeal with the circuit court. And from that action, the circuit, that case was an appeals to the Court of Appeals and Mr. Kane's correct, the Court of Appeals never addressed it on the merits. On a technicality, the court dealt with service issues that are sort of beyond what we talked about today. But basically, the Court of Appeals said, "We're not gonna touch the planning commission decision." So, as we stand today, there's a planning commission approved plan that is one lot with no lake. And so, what we're asking you to do is sort of reinstate what had been done before two thousand and twelve. So, the current owner, Flying Dutchman, acquired the property earlier this year from the bank who had, who actually owned it in two thousand and twelve. Two thousand and twelve, the bank had a purchase contract with Mr. Tackett. Mr. Tackett's purchase contract was contingent upon his own change. Through that process, Tackett threw his hands up and walked away. I think Ms. Cornett threw her hands up and sort of her property moved. I may get that wrong and I think Mr. Isaac also moved. So, several of the owners objected at that time, no longer live out there. So, in two thousand and twelve, this is what the plan looked like. So, you'll just see it's sort of one single parcel that comes around like this. They did just note and access these along here so that the back of the property could be accessed by the, by the track which is intended to be phase four. So, our application at a high level proposes forty-five single-family lots with average acreage of fifty-five, point fifty-five acres per lot. We have a little under four and a half acres of common area. We have a stormwater management area that's being maintained by the HOA. Mr. Kane referenced that and we're, we have a preference but we're open to, to a different solution from the planning commission if desired. And then we also have a trail area that we intend to platten to beat over to Harbor Village. Basically, they have two, they have two trail stubs. They have a trail stub that runs from here all the way down to here and it dead ends. And they were just recently deeded that from the bank. The bank had owned it all along and never deeded it to them when the banks have come back. And then another trail stub picks up here and runs sort of all the way back to here. And I'll show you in a minute where we want to connect those and deed that property to them. So, this is our plan that we submitted with the revision. This is the continuation of the trail system. It's a twelve-foot ride trail that would connect to here. And we would, while this would remain an open space, we would grant an easement across this space for the Harbor Village HOA residents to still access the trail system. So, for example, if somebody wanted to walk from their house, they'd come down along the road, they could still come back to the trail system, come back in the year. There's some different ways they can do it. They're not just dead ends, they have some access issues. Other than that, Mr. Kane sort of went through the details of the plan, which are all accurate. The density, I sort of referenced earlier, we couldn't find any original density requirement or density cap but there was an implication of course because of the calculation of acreage versus the density allowed. The two thousand and four master plan referenced, the two thousand and four master plan referenced three hundred and nineteen units overall but didn't really talk about phase three. The two thousand and five preliminary plan would have had forty-two lots. There was eighty approved, thirty-eight were in phase two, so forty-two would have been in phase three. The two thousand and twelve took it back to one lot, so you basically have density as one lot and thirty acres. And our plan is to take forty-five single-family lots and we're gonna make them just over a half acre lot. Now, we think this is important, we did an analysis of the existing hundred and ninety-eight total lots that are, that are in phases one and two. Of those, a hundred and ninety-four are actually buildable, there's four lots that are created that don't have street addresses and for some reason they're platted that you can't build on them. And the calculation of those is point three seven one. So, our, our size of a lot is two tenths of an acre, almost two tenths of an acre larger than existing lots out there, which we think's valued everywhere. A lot of times in development you see the opposite, they start with nice lots in the front and then as they go back, they get smaller and smaller and smaller. We think this piece of property makes a different result, which is larger rural lots are probably more preferred in here. I mean, not ten acre lots but you have sort of a ridge line and tree lines that go down and those larger lots we think are what is one of the great aspects of Harbor Village for the existing homes and for what we propose. Because of the, if you look at the two thousand and twelve master plan that would, and the two thousand and four master plan, if there are three hundred and nineteen units that were allowed overall in two thousand and four, you take out the hundred and ninety-eight total lots now, a hundred and ninety-four buildable, you take out the existing forty-five lots we're proposing, you would still leave us with sixty-four lots available in phase four absent some other change. Just looking at what the numbers are. The reason I say that is I don't know if the forty-five or forty-four is an issue for the planning commission but I just wanted to show you all that there is capacity, net capacity inside of phase three and phase four so that one lot doesn't create a zoning, a density issue for this development plan. Sort of walk those calculations again. So, we are seeking forty-five lots. There was just an inadvertent error in the plan we submitted, I guess the revised plan we submitted back in September, it said forty-five lots, it was actually forty-six on that plat and Mr. Kane asked us to take one out. And so, he got the number forty-five minus one to forty-four. If we had the correct number there, we'd said forty-six minus one is forty-five. So, we're actually asking for forty-five lots. I don't know if staff agrees or disagrees with that. I know his recommendation was forty-four but I think it was just to lose one lot and we've agreed to lose one lot. And we've agreed that we can't build anything in phase four until we submit an amended master plan. Flying Dutchman has now closed after filing this application. It actually was able to acquire the next property over which is phase four. It's closed on that in the last sixty days. We don't have anything prepared on that yet but there is a master plan for that area that is of record but it has to be updated and then including what is gonna be done here in phase three. Staff report recommendation, we're in large agreement with two small exceptions. Number one is they've approved, they've recommended approval based upon certain conditions. Just walk through the conditions. They've recommended the variance of the roadway, we agree with that and the plan references a cross-section. Second, again, I'm just gonna sort of go through, if any changes come back to the planning staff, if they're minor, if the planning commission major, we agree. There's a reference to the forty-four versus forty-five lots. I don't consider that a material of this agreement, it's more of a calculation error that if I had just paid better attention, we filed it, I would have caught the forty-five that I didn't. That's, that's the only issue there. Everything else, lot eighty shall be a common area or combined. I'm gonna show you a revision in a second. We agree with that. Mr. Kane first had a flag lot. What we've done is taken lots eighty-one to eighty-four and sort of extended them and gotten rid of lot eighty. I'll show you what that does here in a second. We agree with the rest of the staff regarding the concept plan, revised master plan for anything after phase three. We've agreed with all the sewer connections we have to meet. We agree to at least fifty-foot tree preservation area. You'll see a map here in a second. Fifty-foot, I agree, is a minimum tree preservation at the rear of certain lots as you, I call it, right, as you would come in the road, the preservation or construction. Prior to this subdivision plat, homeowner association should be part of the existing Harbor Village. We believe that a new HOA is preferable. In this regard, the, some of the representatives from Flying Dutchman started communicating with the board and owners out there. We met with the board for about two and a half hours, probably three weeks ago or maybe four weeks ago now, with an open mind as to whether we needed to do a new HOA, whether we should join their HOA. We just said, "Let's go in and talk to them." That discussion resulted in a couple of things, one of which was the board saying the size of pond we were proposing was not a three and a half acre lake, it was about an acre and a half pond and that it probably didn't add significant value. There were some other things they were concerned about as far as us paying dues immediately once we platt lots versus other amenities they desired. And from that, we sort of came away with the conclusion that a different or new HOA would probably be preferable. We're open if, if the planning commission wants us to do something like this, which is to say, "We have to have an HOA whether it's the Harbor Village or a new one," and directs us to interact with them to get to a place where their board takes a vote. There's a legal issue about whether they can accept new property under their governing documents that, from that being, and I'll call it anybody from the board speak, if I've misunderstood, I certainly don't want to misstate it, which is they don't believe they can go door to door and get the necessary signatures to allow us to annex our property into theirs. But we're open to a planning commission decision that says, "Hey, if they want to go do that, we'll write our documents, give them to them, they can go door to door, if they want to get the signatures to let that happen, we're open for that process." We just don't think it's feasible or that will actually be accomplished out there. So, that's, that's probably the only second area of, not really disagree with staff just that maybe a slight difference of opinion. Part of construction, meet with engineer, review construction policies, that's typical sign-off. All the other ones are typical sign-offs that they have for a subdivision plat. We all agree with all of them. So, sort of three things in this discussion that I want to point out to you is one, we have parcel A, which is that point three acres to Harbor Village, is to give to them. If you all want it as a condition of approval, we're fine for that. If you just want to take my word, we're gonna give it to them. It's on our draft plat that we're gonna give it to them so it's however you all want to handle it. Number two, we're gonna give them an access easement over our common, our big common area lots, they can access the trail. And then number three is the stormwater quality area on lots seventy, seventy-eight, seventy-nine. I'll show you this in just a second. So, overall, we agree with the staff's report. We have no major disagreements. There's two, I'd say, clarifications or tweaks to things. We do seem to have forty-five lots, like forty-two lots and forty-four lots, and we do seem to have a new HOA. This is not the plan submitted to staff, this is not the official one in the file but following staff report from Monday and the workshop on Monday, we went back and sort of got rid of this lot eighty and combined it to a single large HOA lot along with what Mr. Kane recommended. We have created, and it just shows a fifty-foot tree preservation area along here in the back, and these lots are all extended and create a tree preservation area here. As you can see from these, you can create a larger tree preservation area. I can tell you that this road is along a ridge line and this is sort of down in a valley and this sort of down in the valley with the creek line. The developer doesn't have an intention to go in and strip trees out of there, it's not economical or feasible. There are both existing tall trees but there's also existing dead disease invasive species like honeysuckle. The tree preservation ordinance allows you to, you can deal with those types of trees and still preserve them. So, whatever you all want to do along this area is appropriate. The houses are all gonna be faced, you know, up here in the front of these lots, they're not gonna be positioned back down here in the south anyway. And the final thing is the stormwater area. Mr. Kane referenced that the size of the culverts that go into this road are gonna determine the final size of the stormwater area that's here. And that stormwater area, as you can tell, is what was the basis for the prior lakes. What we suggested is, as you all know, the city of Georgetown has an ordinance that HOAs have to maintain their stormwater but the county doesn't have one right now. We've suggested that, that the stormwater retention issues are gonna, if they arise, probably gonna arise around the culverts with blockages of trees, lambs, et cetera. And that upstream or up, up the waterways, not likely to be the areas where you're gonna have to have concern for maintenance. But if you all, if you all want, our preference is to say that the HOA has an easement to come in and maintain that whole area and that these owners would just have a deeper lot, we think that's a benefit. However, if you all say, "No, you want that to be a, oh, my HOA," we just draw the HOA common area lot and cut that off and they can park a single one. It's, we have a preference but neither, but either one of them are an acceptable solution to us. With that, I may answer the questions.
What's your preference?
My preference is that shows here. My preference is that shows here, we just think it's a better design that shows it, larger, single-family lots, and the place of concern is that this needs to be owned by an HOA, maintained by an HOA, and they need to have the ability to, to maintain that waterway. This is one of the reasons why we think merging with Harbor Village is not the best result, because we're not sure they want the financial responsibility to take on things like this. Now, they may, they may say, yes, they do, but the whole idea of the stormwater area here is, there's a lot of, all of these, you know, these, these creeks that, you know, basically run when it rains, if there's a problem, it's gonna be in this area, it's, it's not gonna be backed up in there.
During your presentation, you just mentioned the fifty-foot tree line-
Yes, sir.
-being in a low-lying area, so is that trail even feasible? The, the easement for the trail to the northeast of the tree line?
You mean, you mean right here?
Correct. Well, yeah, along the tree line on the northeast side.
Yeah, is it feasible?
It's great to approve a, a trail, but if it's gonna be in a, in a pond-
Yeah, well, it's not in a pond-
But a wetland, I guess I'm saying.
But, yeah, is it, is it an area where there could be waterfalling at times? Yes, or it's right off, and I think the actual creek line is sort of more like right here. But all I can tell you is, this has been reflected on, the plan went back at least till two thousand and two, and so we didn't think it was appropriate for us to say, oh, let's scrap their trail system.
Right.
It just didn't get done, and it was, it's been intended to be there for at least sixteen years. We thought it was the right thing to do, is to say, no one else has finished this out for you, this property's gone into foreclosure twice. It went into foreclosure under American Development in the early nineties, and a bank took it back and then sold it to Cato Company, Cato Company, then sold somebody else who took it back, and then that's when the second bank foreclosed on it in two thousand, I think it was two thousand and ten, resulting in the two thousand and twelve sale. We then bought it back from that bank, so to us, we think it's, is this a, is this an active, ongoing trail that you can walk twenty-four, you know, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, fifty-two weeks a year? Probably not. Is there an amenity that this situation should have because it's been reflected? Yes.
Man, all four trails and green spaces, but if they can't be built on or paved, what's the use of having them?
I don't think they intend on here to have paved trails, I think these are all intended to be like woodlands.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions right now? Mr. Billings?
My only comment, I think I mentioned it before, is not assuming that phase four is gonna, is going to happen, I would rather see a cul-de-sac turnaround or something at the end, rather than just a-
Right there?
Yes.
Yeah, and Ms. Smith, that's what we said, if you want a cul-de-sac right there by the hammerhead, we're fine to do that too.
I just know that when you're building, it's feasible, it's a lot more feasible if you're, you can have trucks with trailers and rather than try to back in the driveway or something, it's usually good to turn around and head out.
I, I, I know why this is proposed for lots of reasons, I understand your point. If you all say you want a cul-de-sac, we'll put a cul-de-sac there, those are things that, to me, are, are not disputes on us, I mean, there's a better design, if we go to quickly, but, but you know as well as I do, this property, this property is originally rezoned in nineteen eighty-eight, and we're here thirty years later, and, and on the six development plan for it, so I don't want to disrupt sense of you. If you say put a cul-de-sac here, and if we ever could cut through, we can remove the cul-de-sac and expand the front yards, okay. You're talking about things now that aren't, from a developer standpoint, those aren't issues to fight, those are saying, you all tell us what you think is best, we have a preference, we do it.
Be a lot easier to turn around too, until this, until this section's completed, then it's just, it's just a practical thing.
I have a question on it, if you prefer my comments on it.
So, so you said that blue drainage area, you could add it into that, what was lot eighty?
Yeah, well, I mean, we, if we needed to take this right here, we would just cut this lot back to here, which is actually what the original, we had showed, and then we said, well, let's actually make the lot bigger, we just cut this, this HOA area back to here, probably bring the lot back to here, and we cut it across, and this, this whole thing will become one big HOA parcel, but it would add, I don't know, maybe an acre of HOA, it's, it's-
How much would it cut off that lot there, that big one?
Oh, it cut off, it cut off half the size of the lot, but it's not, but it's not buildable in the whole lot.
Oh, it's an acre lot anyway, that's a big lot anyway.
We have some really good sized lots here. I mean, there's, there's, I mean, these lots here, here, these lots right here along this side are, are what I would call the typical lots for Harbor Village. These lots were extent, were, were designed at one point as typical lots, and we said, let's expand these back because it'll make it nicer, and I'll give you an example of where this, of where I sort of got that idea, where, this is what Victoria Estates does. All of their lots go all the way down to the creek line, in all those areas, they don't have HOAs back there, and one reason is, if you try to create an HOA area all the way back in here, you have an access problem, how do you get equipment? If you're an individual homeowner, here's what they do, they keep the trees for a certain period back where the tree preservation area starts, they have the trees, and they, they have, I would call it yard, but sparse grass and weeds under there, they cut the honeysuckle out, which is invasive, they cut the dead trees out, you have a tree canopy, you have firewood pits, whatever, but it ends up having, being a very nice sort of urban setting with good-sized lots.
Does the developer plan on building all the houses, or selling these off?
We, we would sell the lots off. We may, we may build some houses ourselves, but the lots would be for sale.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, Ms. Billings.
Thank you very much.
Has anyone signed up to speak, Charlie?
Quite a few, they're not necessarily listed as for this one, so is there anyone signed up to speak to this application?
Does anyone want to come up and speak on this application? Anybody that's signed up?
Guess not.
I guess not. Joe, couple of questions for you. Would you prefer that to be in the stormwater?
Yes, I would.
I think so too.
The information now, the preliminary about what's gonna be in there.
I think Ben would prefer it too. So if we could get that added into the stormwater, you know, do that stormwater area you was talking about-
Separated, make, make those lots the stormwater boundary.
Just make the stormwater boundary an HOA common area?
Yeah, yeah, if you don't mind. And then, Joe, what is it, like a hundred and ninety-seven lots or something? Developed in this thing already?
Yeah.
And that's with one entrance?
Yes.
Well, so, so how many do we like to stop at before we have another entrance built?
Two hundred is what the sub-rate said, two, beyond two hundred, I mean, two entrances is physically feasible. Now, this is kind of a pre-existing subdivision, it was approved with one entrance, just the entrance in the back in, in lot space to connect to Mallard Point.
Mallard Point?
There's no real place for another entrance.
Mallard Point's the same way, isn't it? I think Mallard Point one has one entrance.
Well, these two are supposed to, over the master.
Mallard Point was getting connected back into Westwood, and connect back this way, and connect, I talked to Mark Smith today, he said there were three entrances one mile apart proposed originally. The main one to Mallard Point, and we looped around, back to back behind the elementary, and this one would loop back around to, to this entrance. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's already zoned, R one A, it was approved with this one entrance. It'd be difficult to take away the right to develop based on a change of the sub-rates, you know, twenty years later.
That's why Sunset, that's why Sunset clause is so important. I was too, I was sitting here listening to, I said, well, it's a good thing we got Sunset clause now.
We either have to, you know, say they have to connect to Mallard Point, or find us another way.
That's what I was gonna ask the phase four, it's been talked about that it connects back to Mallard Point, right?
Well, the two thousand and two plan showed the connection, that's why I highlighted earlier, but the two thousand, we gave a plan, the floor plan, one of them removed the connection to Mallard Point. When we come back to that plan, our belief is that that stub needs to be created in Mallard Point. We can't connect to Mallard Point because there's a lot between our property and Mallard Point, so we don't have the legal rights to do that, but we believe that a stub should be created in Mallard Point. From our property, that makes sense. And we're agreeing with that, we don't have any, basically we're reverting back to, to that two-point plan. If everyone showed, if everyone showed the connection, we agree that should be done.
Yeah. I know we're jumping ahead, but-
That's okay, I don't mind.
-that next phase, I'd like to see that before I would approve it, anyway, well, I won't be here anyway, it don't make no difference, I'll be gone by then. Does this back up to Burton Pike? No. It doesn't physically go that far back?
Mallard Point doesn't either, does it?
There was upon a time, that was planned, but I'm not sure they ever actually owned the property, or if they did, they then sold the property, because once upon a time, they were talking about a Burton Pike, that entrance.
Mallard Point did have property that went to Burton Pike, but it was recently, that's something we discussed about a year ago, wasn't it? They, they sold off a lot of the property around Mallard Point.
I think I just want to say for the record, and I think we talked about it on Monday, I'd like to see one HOA, because I think if there's two, it's just gonna muddy waters, which HOA is better, which one, I know-
Which one's responsible for the entrance, and which one's responsible for the roads?
Exactly. So I, I think, I don't, like, I think, Charlie, you said we can't force them to create one HOA, but I'd highly recommend that an H, one HOA for a subdivision, it's kinda crazy to have two.
I agree with Mark.
I mean, this is a little different than most, because this has some different issues in the back that HOA will take care of, the front's got the lake and things that they use, so there, there are reasons to be separate, but the main thing is, we can't force the hundred-and-some-odd homeowners already there to accept new ones to come in and either share their amenities, or help, or require them to help pay for the, you know, we just can't do that.
But, let's hope they can be good neighbors and come to some agreements and hopefully improvements.
I have no problem with that, we'll, we'll draft our HOA documents, and we'll go back to the Harvard Board and say, here's our documents, if you all want to have, and sort of, you all make the final decision about, if you want to do it, and then the steps to get it done.
Right.
I, I have no problem doing that at all.
Very good.
Is there anybody here from Harbor Village?
Did you want to speak on it, or? Did you guys want to speak?
Do you have any?
Yeah, please.
My, my concern was-
Did you swear in?
No, did not.
Yeah, you have to swear in.
Anybody that wants?
First off, your name, sir?
Austin Compton.
I thought you were on the list somewhere. Well, it was marked off, but, okay, well, I'll unmark it off. Do you swear affirm the statements you're about to make to be the truth, to the best of your information and belief?
I did.
Thank you.
State, state your name and your, where you live.
I'm at two thirty-four Harbor Village Drive. So I'm right at the corner where their property lot starts. I'm just a bit concerned with coming in, you know, of course, without the lake and things, but also the value of the homes that we build within this area too, if it coincides with what we already have at that area, or how does that-
Well, let Mr. Billings answer your question on that, because I think he can't start it, state it something on that Monday, talking about the homes.
Our architectural standards are gonna be similar to the existing Harbor Village neighborhood, and we'll have an architectural control committee that will actually make sure that builders are building according to similar standards. The size of our lots are actually gonna be a little bigger, so they may actually be, they may actually be a little more expensive, I don't, I can't promise that, but the goal is, we would probably call this, we don't have a final name yet, but the reserve of Harbor Village or something like that, just because our lots are gonna be a little, some of the lots are gonna be bigger, but, but they're the same type of construction that Harbor Village has now, which is largely two-story, at least two-car garage, typically some type of base rate construction, obviously for the front of the structure. It's not a final product entry-level home.
That actually, question? Yes, ma'am?
I didn't, I didn't, I'm swearing in, Amanda Bailey.
Amanda Bailey, do you swear affirm statements you're about to give to be the truth, to the best of your information and belief?
Absolutely. I'm at two sixteen Lake Shore Drive. We met with Mr. Billings, and we, you know, we talked about concerns, and brainstormed, and the main thing, what you brought up about the, the one entrance, out there, we have a lot of natural springs underneath the ground, that main road that goes up and goes to the back of that building has water that seeps up underneath that road. So our concern was construction, big equipment coming in and out of Billy's homes, what, you know, maintain of the road, and, you know, and just different concerns with, with that also.
These are county roads now, aren't they, Charlie?
Yes.
Harbor Village is county road, right? So, so how would that affect? Would they be held responsible for any deterioration of the roads, or?
Well, if there's already deterioration or water problems, then clearly the county's already got a problem there. I think also clearly the county's gonna look, if, if construction traffic then creates further harm, now, how they choose to go about that, no, I don't know, but that clearly is something that the county would be directly involved in, I mean, they're simply not gonna sit there and let construction traffic tear it up, and, I mean, that's not gonna happen.
Yeah.
But that is a county responsibility at this point.
Anyone else?
I still did have the question, is the, is the Harbor Village HOA, are they open to, to include in this, this new development in, in your HOA, or?
Yeah, there's three of us here.
Seems like that's most of the people that show up for the meetings, from what we've been hearing, you know, it's not a whole lot of y'all, your, your residents out there show up for your meeting, so might have to get a knock on some doors to get them to vote on this, because, what'd you say, Charlie, that it has to be in?
Well, in this case, what was it, Nathan, it was fifty-one percent?
Fifty-one percent.
Yeah. I mean, quite often it's up to seventy-five percent, and that's just as insurmountable, but fifty-one is, that is a pretty big impediment.
Yes, ma'am.
Wendy Fryer.
And do you swear affirm statements you're about to give to be the truth, to the best of your information and belief?
Yes.
Wendy Fryer?
Our last meeting-
State, state your name, address, please.
Two thirty, Lake Saturday.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to shock you.
The, our, the challenge of getting the fifty-one percent, I, I think that that's, I think is probably doable, we have some plans in the near future to change our governing documents, which require that door-to-door, we, we had a meeting on Sunday, quarterly meeting, if five residents, out of one hundred and ninety-eight, so we will go door-to-door in order to change our plans.
Charlie, is it fifty-one percent in attendance, or is it fifty-one percent of the residents?
Fifty-one percent of the lots.
Okay.
The document says an instrument signed, about fifty-one percent of the current owners been recorded in the county clerk's office.
So there needs to be a lot of doors knocked down.
One has to be signed and notarized, like a deed, it's not just petition.
Yeah.
So we have to have it noted yet at the time.
Lot of work.
It's a, it's, it would be definitely a challenge, but, like I said, we're working on some, some other things that we have to do that for anyway.
Good.
So, probably we'll combine it, and in the, in the meeting that we met with a representative from Flying Dutchman, you know, Mr. Billings, there were some concerns addressed, or expressed, but for the most part, all those concerns were addressed in a way, similar to what you talked about tonight, so it's, the board, I speak for the board, for the most part, we are amenable to the joint, like I said, other than the logistics of, of buying by the requiredness.
Any more questions?
I have one more question for Joe on the forty-five or forty-four lots, buildable lots.
Well, I mean, I think I vote you forty-five, that they need the minimum width and size. The only thing I don't know about is, is that stormwater detention area and the pipe size, and that because I think the lots, that the lots that were added, or the lots that were added, were below the dam. Previously, there was a dam there, and the lake, and below the dam, never known that was common area, so now that the lake's gone away, there's lots there, so if they're buildable, I mean, if there's no drainage in the, you know, the way of the driveway, then I'm okay, but we really don't have enough information to say one way or the other.
So what's being shown here now, is that forty-four lots of, or forty-five?
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Plus the, plus the two big, there'll be two big HOA lots there also.
Correct.
I think the lots they picked up were almost at the bottom, below the strange, below the blue drain here now. There's extra lots in there because there's no, there's no dam overflow area.
But when they come back for the final, we're not gonna approve a final if they've got unbuiltable lots down there, I mean, they're gonna have to demonstrate that.
I'm going to have to staff to determine whether that lot's buildable.
Yeah, yeah.
We believe that the, on the front of the bill, that's the, the area below the dam, it's open to happen, because then that's a lot of additional options. Because we don't have the downstream flood hazard.
Any more questions? The gentleman out here. Yes, sir.
You got a comment here?
Yeah, I just have-
State your name again.
Sure, Austin Compton, two thirty-four Harbor Village. I noticed that this one was a burden of nature, I think two hundred and forty-three homes have been in that area. And then on the original, I think two thousand twelve, for phase four, where it connects with Mallard Point, that area has since been sold off to a private site, so I don't see how they could, because Harbor Village would be-
Well, that's what he was saying, yeah.
Yeah, I believe that, didn't you, didn't you say, Nathan, that your client has acquired what would be phase four?
That's correct.
That, that would, if possible, on the other end, connect to-
But there's a lot.
There was one lot, though, in between.
Well, I said, except for that, but that's on the Mallard Point side.
Yeah.
But yes, they do on that property now.
If I was spoken, if I was spoke, and it means to find, that the client has now obtained title to what is known as phase four, since they filed this application, they didn't do it at the end of the time they filed this, but they do now. And that's, that connection, they are agreeable to making sure that there isn't a connection or stub or phase four in Mallard Point, understanding we can't connect. So if somebody else does it on that side, but on our side, we won't put that in the plan for phase four.
I was just saying, from their phase four to where the road is in Mallard Point, there's private property between.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Any other questions? I got, I got one comment on this. It's, it's good to see an existing thing that's been longstanding, such as this application, come back and finally get built out. Not totally, but it's, it looks like it's in the works, instead of trying to take up another form and make a new subdivision. So it's nice to see that something that's been approved for so long to finally get back on the table and get it going again. So I'm glad to see that, so I'm in favor of this application. No more comments or questions, we'll take a motion.
I'll make them.
Excuse me, Mark, if I may, just to make sure I get this right, I will add the condition that the drainage area shown be included in HOA property with the other lots reduced, you know, to match whatever that line is. But I just want to make sure I get the wording right. So it's the detention area, the drainage area, what are we calling this?
Stormwater drainage.
I think it's Stormwater Management Area.
Stormwater management boundary, and that may change.
I think it's lot seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine.
If that changes due to the, if that changes due to the culvert or the pipe under the road, then, well, I guess that shouldn't reflect the, that should be reflected in those lots.
And that's, that's why we said it's sort of preliminary, because until we actually get down to culvert, that stormwater, it may be back some. There's ways to handle it, but we've got to reflect what we have now.
All right.
But yeah, we're fine with that, which is the stormwater quality area shall be on an HOA lot, not individual residential ones.
All right, in that case, the, the two adjustments to the proposed conditions of approval. Number nine, instead of saying existing lots shall be made part of, wait a minute. Well, that shouldn't be existing lots. The lots in this phase three shall be made part of the existing Harbor Village HOA comma, if approved by the existing Harbor Village HOA. Otherwise, they would have a separate HOA, but maintaining the standards and commons, all that stuff that Nathan drew up when, whenever he did. That would be number nine. And then there would be a separate one, I suppose, then, that says the stormwater management area to be included in common area or HOA controlled area, not in private lots. Now, is that correct for everybody?
So we make that sixteen?
That would be, yes, sir, sixteen.
So make that sixteen.
There's a variance with this too.
Right, got it.
Number two is forty-five lots.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yes. Change forty-four to forty-five.
So with that all being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve PSP.
Number seventeen. I don't think, you didn't want it to be permanent, did you?
No.
Just the cul-de-sac. It didn't have to be permanent.
It would be built permanent, but it could be taken out, taken out with-
Then it wouldn't be permanent. Then it wouldn't be permanent.
It's built permanent.
Temporary. It's anything permanent.
Temporary. It tends to-
Just a-
Not a gravel.
On black cotton.
Just a cul-de-sac instead of a hammerhead is what you're asking for.
Right.
So.
Makes it a lot easier for anybody to turn around and-
Need to make that number seventeen, Charlie?
Uh, yes, and, and how did you say that again, Mr. Smith?
Cul-de-sac instead of the hammerhead at the end of the road.
At the end of Harbor Village Drive.
Well, there's only one hammerhead proposed, so if I just say cul-de-sac instead of hammerhead,
That's right.
we'll know what we're talking about, okay.
Seventeen conditions now.
Yep.
And yes, sir, that's seventeen.
Okay, try it again. I'll make a motion to approve PSP two thousand eighteen dash forty-six with the one variance of, hold on. Roadway with the twenty-four foot pavement, sixty-foot right of way to match existing Harbor Village Drive, with all seventeen conditions listed, and also, of course, that recommendation of nine being that the Harbor Village HOA and the new, hopefully formed together and play well together.
We have a motion by Mr. Solsky.
I have a second.
I have a second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion is approved. Thank you, Mr. Billings. Our next, you ready, Joe? Or who's doing that, Michaela? Our next application would be PDP twenty eighteen dash forty-seven and FSP twenty eighteen dash fifty-three, one oh five, one oh seven Marketplace Circle. I'm going to step out just a second.
This is a preliminary development plan to construct, actually, I do have a minor revision before we get started. I had written one thousand six hundred twenty-five square foot bank, and it's actually proposed as a two thousand square foot bank. Sorry about that, so anyways, it's a preliminary development plan to construct a two thousand square foot bank and a preliminary subdivision plot to create a buildable lot at one of Pride Marketplace Circle. The site is overall Marketplace Circle, between Marketplace and then the clowning. It's right off West B Path. One oh seven Marketplace Circle, which is just adjacent to it, is already being developed. They're essentially going to be developed, it's going to look as one lot, or providing a shared parking area. I'll get into that later, but you can see this was from Google Maps, you can see it's already been developed, and it's been by the local broker. The, that multi-tenant building there, the three tenants has already been built up. So this is the subdivision plot. This was previously subdivided in two thousand thirteen, which created lot four A, which is the one oh five Marketplace Circle, the one that will be in discussion for today. And it also created lot four B, which is one oh seven Marketplace Circle. At the time in two thousand thirteen, lot four A was created as an unbuildable lot. It's kind of because there's an underground detention system, one oh five Marketplace Circle. This hatch area that you can see, sorry, is, is where the easement was created. The easement was created in two thousand seventeen on an additional plot to create an easement around that detention system. But also, GMWSS did provide water and sewer on the lot, so currently there is no water and sewer available on the lot, so that infrastructure would have to be built out if the proposal is approved. Um, the one other change that I wanted to talk about on the plot is they could extend one oh seven Marketplace Circle slightly. They placed the sign on the project, the subject property, one of five Marketplace Circle for that multi-tenant lot that's already been built. So they adjusted the lot lines to bring that sign onto the already developed lot, and then they'll be able to place their own sign for the bank. So you can get into the plan now. So the preliminary development plan is showing all the required setback lines. It already has an existing entrance off Marketplace Circle. There are actually two entrances built for the two lots. As you can see, it is a shared parking area. There's going to be sixty-five spaces that were proposed. The original development plan for one oh seven Marketplace Circle here had ninety-two spaces, so they are reducing that. They'd still be meeting the required spaces that we would be looking for. And one oh five Marketplace Circle is showing sufficient parking for their use. However, one oh seven Marketplace Circle will not be meeting the requirements. So we will be looking for a shared parking area before final development plan approval. As far as the landscaping is concerned, they are looking for two variances. The first variant will be along the southern battery here and along the clown circle. We typically require a property perimeter screening of a six-foot hedge line and one tree every thirty feet. They're showing what we require for BUA perimeter screening, which is one tree every forty feet and a three-foot hedge line. Staff is agreeable to this, and allows for more visibility, it'll also be soft paint on the BUA area, which is kind of the intent. So, and the other variants that they'd be looking for is typically along a joining property, we would also be looking for that three-foot hedge line and one tree every forty feet. Obviously, with the shared parking area, this would not really be feasible, so staff is also agreeable to this variant.
So do we have to add that one on there, because you only have one listed?
I only have one listed because it wasn't discussed for the variants along the clown circle for that property perimeter screening. I think it was brought up at workshops or a computer, but I, I did add in all the conditions of approval that the applicant can sign. This is just a zoomed in view of the actual lot of one oh five, and I highlighted where that easement is. There's no temporary or permanent structures that can be placed on the easement for obvious reasons. Our staff engineer does have some concerns. He can't verify that the proposed structure won't be affecting the underground detention system out there. So that's just something to keep in mind. It, it is going to be pretty close to where that easement line comes up to, and they obviously are showing a parking area over it, but that's just, I, I think it's a speak to Ben before I put together the schedule for it, but.
In the law of landscaping.
Yep, in the law of landscaping. And I mean, the water and sewer lines are presumably going to have to run through this area, so that, that is another issue to keep in mind. As far as the rest of the development plan, they meet all the interior landscaping area requirements. They're not meeting the canopy requirements on the proposed plan, and they're five hundred and eight square feet short, so they will have to show that on the final development plan. I didn't just go over the conditions here. Most of them are pre-standard, I did add that second waiver for the property perimeter screening along the clown circle. Also, I did remove one of the conditions of approval, number nine. That said that the applicant would need to submit engineering drawings of the foundation to the planning commission engineer. Ben indicated that he's not qualified, so we do those, so I removed that condition of approval. And then, just as far as the conditions for the subdivision plot, they're obviously going to need rebuilding channels, including CMWSS before final subdivision plot approval. And they'll also need to submit, uh, get a term agreement agreement of the parking area. And so Ford shall provide enough on the plan to indicate that there is going to be some type of maintenance agreement. I believe it's the same owner, but just to prevent from any future sales or whatnot. So I don't know if you guys have any questions for me.
I do. I'm concerned if there's underwater detention and Ben's not qualified, would we not require a certified engineer to approve this and that it will not affect the underwater detention?
Well, I mean, I think they're going to require, the engineer who designs the, you know, they'll require that for detention. He's just not qualified to review building, um, structural, I mean, he's not a structural engineer. But building inspection will require that you technical.
Need you just say you removed it?
Um, yeah, I removed it from having to submit it to the planning commission engineer. I believe that would be standard once they go to building inspection.
So we'd have to get it added to the list of, uh, conditions of approval?
I don't know if we can tell building inspection exactly what the county, these are about.
I don't know how we can approve something if, if not knowing that it'll affect or not affect underwater detention. I would definitely not approve it if, if we have any thought that it would affect. So I think we need a guarantee that it wouldn't affect this underwater detention.
Is it underwater detention or underground?
Underground detention, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you. Underground detention, my bad.
I would suggest maybe have them make, make them come back with final development plan. You know, present that to planning commission with all their, at that point, they'll have the final design. I'm sure Ben will require engineering information.
As I'm saying, and/or maybe the applicant's going to answer it too.
Because this is just the preliminary.
Yeah, I know, but nice to get the information out early.
Especially when there's questions like that on there.
Right.
I think Ben's suggestion was, once you define exactly where the edge of the stormwater is, he needs at least a two to one slope.
But I think Mr. Smith pointed out that the adjoining property also has underground water detention. So I'm sure there had to be some engineering scope done on those properties as well, so. All right, thanks, Joe.
Any more questions?
Thank you. Is the applicant here to speak?
Do you swear affirm statement you're about to give to be the truth, to the best of your information and belief?
Yes, sir, thank you. Mister Chairman, for the record, my name is Jihad Alagian, Division Engineering, one twenty-eight East Srinor Road, Lexington, twenty twenty-four, they're five con stables. We are in agreement with the staff, but one thing that related to the foundation of the building, I mean, we need to submit that information that the final approval is at the stage, we'd be glad to do that, but we'd, if, if, we'd prefer not to come back in front of the planning commission because we have, the reason I'm saying that, because they're trying to start working on this project very shortly, and they want to get this building open before long, so they need this time, because we missed the filing deadline, so it's going to be heard.
It won't be heard until December.
And finally, it will be in December for January hearing, which is, it's going to push us in the winter. And we'd be glad to provide this information to Ben or whoever, planning commission staff, which will mandate this information to be submitted. And it's going to be stamped by professionals, by structural engineer, the foundation, the site is going to be stamped by also professional engineer, and we understand the constraint or, or concern of the planning commission and, and the board, and we'd be glad to address it with the staff and make sure that this is kept on based on their, their requirements.
Michaela, do you have any problems with that?
I don't, um, as long as, as I'm able to, yeah, everything except for this, you have to be aware of it, I'm sure.
Yes, and a little bit of, yeah, we'd be glad to do that, and a little bit of history on this underground detention, uh, on the previous development plan that, that we submitted last year, it was requested that this detention base, underground detention base need to be confirmed in the field. So what we did is that we went and started digging few walls through the field to determine who's, who's the contractor, Mr. Dillinger was the contractor on the underground detention. And we went and dig into a different location, and based on exposing that area, we delineated that underground detention. This is why we are confident this is where the line is, and this is where it is. This is why we are confident this is where the line is and this is where it is. And if the line end up being not in the right location, if we need to go dig and expose to determine that area, we'd be glad to do that. And if the line end up being a little bit harder to the west, the building has to shrink. So we understand that, so uh we'd be glad to do that to the satisfaction of the staff. And I think that's all the solution maybe is to go expose it and let the engineer see it, the Ben see it, and then he knows where it is. And based on that, we can start putting the building.
Sounds reasonable to me.
Sounds reasonable to me.
Is there any more questions? The applicant? Or Michaela? I think it's good plan.
With, yeah, with that being said, I'll make a motion to approve PDP dash two thousand.
Well, does we have anybody in the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Audience want to speak on this application? If not, okay.
Okay. PDP dash two thousand eighteen dash forty-seven and FSP dash two thousand eighteen dash fifty-three with the two variances. And the, how many? Nine or eight, because you removed one. Um, conditions, Charlie, do we need to add a eighth or, no, I'm sorry, ninth condition? Uh, that he work, the engineer and the applicant work uh to to resolve the concerns?
That's just part of standard practice anyway for a final.
I think that really is. Okay, I think that really is. But but you're talking about nine and eight. I only have seven.
No, there's, there's actually nine on the one I have.
I think Michaela mentioned at least mission nine was removed because that was the one.
Well, she removed one, so that's why I said eight.
I actually, sorry, I remember to, I had one that required them to put the six-foot hedge line and a one tree every thirty feet. To the property screening requirements back where it's hopefully discussed, thinking that a waiver is required, so I added that.
Oh, okay, so.
So there's two variances and seven.
On yours, number six and number nine.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I've got seven conditions on each and two waivers on the preliminary development plan.
Scratch six and.
So.
So I think they're good the way they are because I believe the other is is part of the actual standard practices.
So I made a motion to approve it.
We have a motion by Mr. Solsky. A second by Mr. Caldwell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you, sir. Moving right along, our next application be FSP twenty eighteen dash fifty, the Party Miller property, final subdivision flat.
Alright, uh, this is a final subdivision flat to divide one tract into four tracts, creating two five-acre tracts, one six-point-two-three acre tract, and the thirty-four acre remainder tract at three one-five-nine Newtown, Newtown pipe. Um, it's down to A-one agricultural. All those grounding zones are also down to A-one agricultural. And they are not requesting any variances. So, sorry, it's going to be a little bit hard to see, but um this is a six-point-two-three acre tract.
You were right.
Okay. Alright, uh, yep, so this is a six-point-two-three acre tract, uh, the five acre tract, the additional five acre tract, and then this is the remainder tract back here. This is the increased staying parcel. Um, like I said, they're meeting all of our requirements. They're showing the required fifty-foot building setback lines on all the lots. The remainder tract is essentially the only exception in this area, so it's sort of a plug zone. So they're just showing this as the building line here. I I scaled it out as approximately three hundred feet, um, give or take. They are showing a shared access easement here off of Newtown pipe, um, that would serve as track A and track B. Um, this would meet our requirements. They would need to receive KYTC approval for the entrance. Um, and Ben did ask that, um, we received that verification. They also have an existing entrance over here for the remainder tract. Um, this tract, uh, track C is not showing entrance. It obviously has run into all Newtown pipe. So it has the ability to provide access and utilities. They're just not proposing an entrance at this time. Um, and again, that would need KYTC approval. So staff is recommending approval of this application with all the standard conditions, for one exception, it's just that we received um verification that they received approval from KYTC for that, that proposed shared entrance. You guys have any questions for me?
Questions for Michaela right now? Thank you, Michaela. So to develop this, they don't need an entrance for track C?
Um, typically, we look for a proposed entrance, but um because they they do have permanent along Newtown pipe, there is the ability to have an entrance. It's just a matter of where KYTC would feel comfortable having that entrance. It's also possible that they might want to just try and hook in with this um existing entrance off their remainder tract. I'm not sure what their intentions are for that one.
Okay. Thanks, Michaela. The applicant here? You have anything, sir? You all come up and speak?
Uh, no, the uh, I think Ben had said during workshop.
State, state, state your name and address, please.
Keith Winston, Corporate Engineering, two thirty-eight Jefferson Street and, I'm sorry, one ten West Main Street here in Georgetown. As far as the entrances that were turned up for track C, uh, Ben had mentioned during workshop that uh the final flat approval will be pending in KYTC approved. Entrances, so uh, and track C is a uh future lot. It's not the one that is currently uh had plans for. Uh, the six-track A, which is a six-acre lot, the uh, uh, our client is uh planning to build his home there. And uh, the remainder tract, track B is also future uh lot. There's no plans for it at this time. The remainder thirty-four acre lot, um, the intention is to sell that back to the family farm. The family farm, there, there's four tracks out here, all owned by Party Miller. Um, the other three tracks total about seventy acres. Uh, this is a fifty-acre track, so the thirty-four acre track, uh, his intention is to sell to the family.
Any questions for the applicant? Thanks, sir. We'll hear from the audience now.
I'm Dorothy Klein on um two nine four West Coal Ridge Lane. I just had a couple of questions.
But were you sworn in? Oh, do you swear a firm, what you're about to say to be the truth, the best of your information and belief?
Yes, sir.
Dorothy Klein?
Yes. Um, the, the, the plan looks pretty good. Um, and I've spoken to the neighbors on Coal Ridge. And we just had um some basic questions as far as the, the barn. Um, I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer that or not, um, whether it's going to be a residence, a barn, or an event venue.
I'm told by my client that it is not going to be an event venue.
Okay, because the, the noise from uh events in the past.
He expressed that to me today, that, that if anyone shows up, I hope they're happy that we're not turning this thing to an event barn.
I think he has to go through the Board of Adjustments on something like that.
Yeah, that could not be approved here, nor is it to be done without approval from the Board of Adjustment, so.
Double states used it, and we had mariachi bands go for three days, and the sheriffs couldn't contain it at times. Not very often, but um.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, that's a violation of zoning ordinance if they do that, so.
If the sheriffs can't stop it, then it goes on. I'm just saying, they weren't real friendly.
Well, but, but sheriff doesn't usually try to enforce zoning stuff, so if that goes on, then they probably need to turn that over to the people at P and Z to look into, you know, send notices and so on.
It's a beautiful barn, um, so, you know, and, and, and the whole plan looks pretty good. It looks a whole lot more sensible than, than the last plan, so, so that all, all seems well and good. Um, you know, so of course, our only other concerns is, you know, lights, noise, and what would be happening with the thirty-five acres in the future? Would it be parceled off further or would it stay agricultural?
Could you, could you speak up this way, please?
Sorry, the thirty-five acres, would it be, could uh remain agricultural? Or, or were there plans?
Yeah, I think he stated that it would probably be sold back to the family, so that, that sounds like that's the plan right now with it, so.
Well, and plus, they couldn't do anything other than that with it unless, again, notice was filed, notice was given to neighboring properties, and they filed an application for if it's to be divvied up for zone change. So nothing, nothing's going to happen anytime soon.
So, you know, I mean, our only concern is lights and noise. It does seem to fit with the area quite well. Um, and if the barn is going to be divvied.
No mariachi bands.
I'm telling you, I felt like Osama Bin Laden torture, you know. But mariachi is worse than whatever he, anyways, only three days, but you know, um, we got through it. But, um, so then, you know, as far as security lights and, and noise, um, we get a light from the, the church since there's security lights. And, you know, we'd better without it, but it was there of what we lived in, so I understand the, the need for the, the church's uh security lights. Kind of, you know, as far as stargazing, it's kind of. But, um, it, 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 it looks pretty good as far as sensible, much more sensible than the last plan, so. That's, that's all our concerns, the lights, noises, and the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else?
Oh, this, this property by this, um, by this where in.
Oh, alright, in that case, what's your name, sir?
Grant Bolt, B O L T.
Thank you.
Thirty-one forty-six Newtown pipe. So I wanted to confirm with Velper, the three, the three tracks we're talking about, A, B, and C, of course, I know C is still uh in, in the process.
B and C are, are just?
Yeah, but, but I'm assuming we're talking individual lot tracks, and I want to, I want to verify we're talking about these tracks. How are they similar to what's already out there on the town path?
Wait, yeah, they're.
Not fifty, not fifty, not fifty square foot shopping mall.
Michaela can probably get some better.
We, we can't, we can't tell them what they can build on anyway.
What's allowed to be built on these, and I, I don't have any.
Yeah, we can't, we can't determine what they do on that.
Lynn Strathman, I signed up, uh, one three two Ritz Boulevard in the Heritage subdivision. Um, guess the question, we're new to Kentucky, we just stopped counting.
Welcome.
Thank you, enjoying it. Um, these are, this is zone dag. So what is the acreage?
Five acres is a minimum.
Five acres and it's still remaining ag?
Yes, ma'am.
And then what are the limitations for property that's zone dag?
One dwelling, you need a per.
I'm sorry?
Uh, one dwelling, you need a per five acre. Um, so each of those individual lots can have a maximum of one dwelling.
One dwelling and then outbuildings? Are there limits on outbuildings?
Don't think so.
Well, they can have barns, and they can have ag sheds, and I'm sure they can have.
Just setbacks would be the only thing like Steve said.
So your final plan is, is just simply agreeing that this is five acres, it's ag, it can have a dwelling. But as far as, like, the preliminary flats with the subdivisions, there's no requirements on that land?
This is just a rural residential lot that can have agriculture on it.
I think it's any different election than he said, it's forty acres.
Forty acres, yeah. Are you TM?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Our, our concern is.
What, what was your name again?
Tim Strathman.
And address?
One thirty-two Ritz Boulevard.
Thank you.
Our former experience has been that there was a differentiation between ag and rural ag. Rural ag being your traditional dairy farm. Um, and there were stipulations as to number of livestock units per acre and those kind of things. And what we're, I guess, trying to get clarified is what we would not be real happy with. If somebody goes out there and goes to call our square foot home, puts a chicken coop, adds little pet pigs on down line, it, it, it's.
We haven't, we have no say-so on that at all. If that's what somebody wants to do, that's what they could do. We have no say-so on that.
It, it would seem somewhat inappropriate in light of the adjacent properties, as I pointed.
I can understand that, what you're saying, because of where you're at and the coal ridge in behind, but when it becomes to separating a farm like this, there's not much we can, we don't have much control over it, except that we can, it has to be a minimum of five acres.
Lynn Strathman again. Um, so just for education, where does the restrictions for building come in the county? I mean, who has jurisdiction? What department, what commission has jurisdiction on?
There is, there is. Well, as far as land use goes, I mean, county ordinance governs, but as far as cutting up farmland, you either do it as a cluster, which is what's across the road, or you do it in five acre tracts. If you do more than three, you have to have a zone change.
More than three what?
More than three five acre tracts. You have to have a zone change.
So this isn't a zone change? Is this a zone change?
No.
No, this is just a flat, preliminary flat approval, so you're just, we're just approving the layout of the lot.
Okay, thank you.
In this particular situation, Keith Winston, Corporate Engineering, sorry. Um, track A is intended to be a single-family home with family living in it, with no farming practices intended. Um, it is also the intention that track B and track C would be developed in a similar manner. Not developing, those lots would be built upon as a single-family residence. Um, thirty-five acre goes back to the family that owns seventy acres adjoining, and, and I don't know if they're going to have cows or chickens or, or, or what. I, I don't have any uh thing of that, but I, I can tell you that the intention on the three lots, A, B, and C, is a single-family home.
Now, now the owner of the, yes, come on now, now the owner of those homes, give me, if I'm wrong, Charlie. But the owner of those lots can place restrictions on those lots as to what been, has been built upon, or the owner, whoever's selling those lots, right, Charlie?
That, that's true, but the county has chosen not to. It's just simply fifty-foot setbacks, uh, one year, uh, one residence per five acres.
And that's, that's due to the zoning that is, is for the property.
Do we have to really in the county?
Well, it's still quite a bit, yeah, you're right. But otherwise, decent farming practices, you can put probably not much more than three or four cows on it. But, I mean, you know, whatever those kinds of restrictions, but legally, five acres, residents, you know, a few horses on, on an ag lot. Yes, ma'am.
Lynn Strathman, uh, one more question. If there was only, if there was only intention for one residence to be on plaque A, why did you choose to divide it up into four?
Um, I believe that was the uh advice of his realtor, that the current zoning regulations allow five-acre lots to be established. And he felt that selling those would be financially beneficial to him down the road. Whether he sells them or not, we don't know, because he's selling the remainder to the family farm. And he created his lots for future possibilities.
Lynn Strathman, one more question. So if he was going to take that thirty-five acres and subdivide it like heritage and be a zoning change?
Yes, he'd have to come back, follow zone change, do all kinds of publications, signs on the property, letters, notifying, and so on, and.
We just received notification of this hearing or whatever, committee meeting, two weeks ago, and we didn't know anything about it, and it's a final. We didn't know anything about it until two weeks ago.
Well, the notice requirement is not less than seven days, not more than twenty-one days prior to the hearing, so that, that's why you got it. Well, the notice requirement is not less than seven days, not more than twenty-one days prior to the hearing, so that, that's why you got it in a couple of weeks before.
But zoning change, will we get more notice than that?
Well, it'll be in the paper, there'll be a sign on the property, and you'll get the, pretty much the same written in the mail.
Okay.
And if you guys ever have any questions, you're, you can call the staff down at the office.
We don't know when to ask questions, 'cause we don't, we're not, no, you know, we're not notified of it until, okay, thank you.
Is, what is the, is it still the same two-day notification policy for zone change as well?
Yeah, yeah, at least.
For two weeks is what?
Or is it? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's fourteen days. Uh, the newspaper is minimum seven, maximum twenty-one, and the sign is also fourteen days, isn't it? Yeah, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Come on.
I swore in Fran Lockwood, five-three-two six.
Yes, you did. Thank you very much.
Um, I'm part of the family, so I think everyone can relax as far as, we know any future plans, some plans for one home at this time. And we grow alfalfa and soybeans on the property. That's it.
Any more questions? Comments? If not, we'll take, motion, please.
I'm on a roll. I'll make a motion to approve F S P two thousand eighteen dash fifty with all the, the six conditions of approval.
Motion by Mr. Solsky, second. Second by Mr. Mifflin. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is approved. Y'all need a break?
Uh-oh.
I'm okay.
You all good?
You all good? Good to go? Need a break?
No.
Oh, no. Need a break?
No, these next two things won't take any time.
Alright, I'm ready. Keep going.
Other's four things.
Uh, I guess our next, out of business, I'll be, uh... If you, if you folks could step outside, thank you. Unless you wanna hear our... Our, our next time business is the open space standards, which is a public hearing, which is continued, so we'll open that up and go at it again.
Alright.
So Matt.
Um, so, uh, before we do part and go back to part of the, sort of what our goal for this evening, like this, uh, summer hearing would be, really, we're gonna go over once again what we talked about two months ago, um, as far as what staff is proposing, uh, in cha- in terms of changes to the subregs and some changes to the zoning ordinance, uh, and then if you all are agreeable, we might look for, for some type of, uh, vote on, on a recommendation. But to dive into what we're, what we're proposing to you, I'll start with, uh, the changes to the zoning ordinance. And each of you has, uh, a sheet that looks like this table in front of you. This is the schedule of dimensionary regulations, a thought of the zoning ordinance. It's located near the end of the zoning ordinance, and what I've done to make this a little bit easier is I've highlighted the areas where there are changes proposed. But basically, what we're looking to do is, uh, move the zoning ordinance somewhat away from using net density as a way that we calculate how many lots, uh, are appropriate for, you know, a particular tract of land, and move that over to gross density. So, uh, when, when I say net density and gross density, basically, gross density is we look at the total acre to a site, you know, you have thirty-five acres, you look at that thirty-five acres, and to calculate net density, we would say they wanna do X number of dwelling units divided by the total number of acres, and that would be your gross density. When we look at net density, we calculate it a little bit differently, uh, as defined by the zoning ordinance. The net density, you take the, the total number of dwelling units and you divide it by, um, essentially the gross acreage minus the right-of-way that's proposed. So what this has always seemed to have caused, especially in our urban areas, is a little bit of confusion, uh, between the developers and staff, and sometimes, you know, staff and the developers and the planning commission is, um, you know, when something comes in at the preliminary stage and they think that they have X number of acres of right-of-way, when it then turns to the final and they know exactly how many is the right-of-way, they have, they're giving an extra lot here or there, and we can sort of eliminate that confusion, we just calculate it all based on gross density upfront. They can know exactly how many lots they're gonna have based on the size of the tract that they purchased. So I think that it, it offers a clearer solution for us going forward. And what I have here in this table, uh, shows us how, how we came about the, the changes from, from the current net density to the previous gross density. Um, I do have a note on this, uh, at the bottom, that we did have to make an assumption, uh, in order to make this conversion, and that assumption is that, um, you know, twenty percent of the land, uh, that, that you purchase, uh, to develop will go towards, um, right-of-way and other infrastructure. If you look at the way that the, the current net density, uh, sets up and the, um, maximum number of dwelling units, uh, per acre that the current regulations have, this is roughly, uh, that twenty percent difference, uh, coming from there. Now, I looked at all of our different zoning categories and the difference between, um, the current net density with regulation and the maximum number of dwelling units per acre allowed, and it wasn't twenty percent all the way across, so twenty percent was sort of the median, uh, middle, uh, value. So I, I, that's sort of the basis we went. So with that assumption, we then used the net density to calculate what the gross density, uh, would be, so that we're not really altering too much what somebody's, you know, developable, developable area, uh, would be in the different zoning districts. Some of the changes might be slight, uh, in, in some of the zoning districts, particularly on the, the less dense range with the R one A and the most dense range on the HART three. But we basically came up with these, uh, values that are in the right-hand column of, uh, this table. So that's, that's basically, uh, I guess, before I go into this next slide, uh, I just wanted to highlight, uh, where those values and, and some things that are on this, uh, table that I've proposed, that I've given you. As you can see, on, on the first side, the side with the, the main table, um, we have changed, uh, in the fir- in the left-hand column, where it will say, uh, gross acre, units per gross acre. Previously, that said units per net acre. I've made the adjustment, as you can see, to the, uh, the number of dwelling units per gross acre allowed for the R one A, R one B, and R one C, uh, categories. And if those do re- are reflected on the table, uh, on the screen as well. I've also added, uh, footnotes for, um, the A one, C one, as well as the A five zoning districts. Those, uh, were not previously there either, uh, and I can address those here in a second. So if you flip the sheet over, um, this is the, these are all the footnotes that go along with that table. So for item, for that footnote fifteen, uh, that I mentioned before, we wanted to make sure that, um, you know, our, our, our items, uh, districts are not really impacted by this change, and so that note indeed does clearly indicate that, you know, this change to gross acreage does not apply to the A one, the A five, or the C one districts. We didn't wanna see a situation where somebody just looking to subdivide property could potentially, uh, I guess, lose some of their, you know, potential tracts or agricultural tracts, um, uh, in the process. The other change that I made is, uh, as you can see on notes eight and nine, um, I did convert those, uh, previous net acreage to gross acreage. So as far as the changes to the zoning ordinance, uh, I looked through for all the references to density, uh, net density, and these are all, these are all the changes that would really require for us to make a transition, uh, in our urban residential districts from net density to gross density. Uh, moving on to the changes that we're proposing, uh, in the subregs, so, alright, losing the sheet. We're proposing for all these changes to be contained in Article five, uh, of the, of the subregs. There is currently in Article five, but all items in there will move to, to other pertinent sections of the, of the subregs, so we're not deleting anything, uh, we're not removing any regulations that are in Article five currently. They'll just be moved to, to other sections, uh, that are, that are also, that are, I guess, more appropriate. But looking at the, um, the open space requirement, um, so as you can see, I've got the, the gross density listed on the table as well as the zoning districts, and, uh, as we discussed two months ago, um, there's gonna be different sort of open space requirements based on the zoning district, and so, and I guess, to be honest, the, the reasoning behind that is that if you've got larger lots in an R one A district, you're already sort of implicitly providing more open space, there's more space between the houses, people have larger yards, there's less, or perhaps less of a need for sort of community-owned open space, whereas, as you can see, the higher the density that you go to, the more open space that we're looking to provide. As I mentioned here in the, in the notes on, on this table as well, uh, all the, the requirements, uh, that we, that we came up with here for open space are based upon providing five acres of open space per thousand persons, um, and so in order to calculate that, um, we did look at, um, census data as far as how many people we have living in single-family homes versus, uh, sort of on average versus multifamily homes or dwelling units, if you will. And so that's sort of what all those numbers, all those percentages were based on. We did round them to the nearest whole number, just so it would be a little bit easier to calculate for, for developers and staff going forward. So, I guess, so then looking from columns three to column four here, um, you'll notice that we do, we did, uh, factor in a difference between sort of standard development, development and PUD development. Currently, uh, what we require is that PUD developments provide ten percent open space, and then we don't really have a requirement for non-PUD developments to require open space, so since we're requiring open space for all, we thought it was still important to require, uh, more for PUD developments, because there does need to be some sort of trade-off, um, for allowing the developer to sort of bend and, and vary the, the typical regulations, um, and so what we did, uh, would, would, uh, sort of create that distance or separation between the two was to require that PUD developments provide twenty-five percent more open space than non-PUD. And once again, those were then rounded to the nearest whole number, um, so that's why there's a little bit of a discrepancy. If you just tried it, you know, add two-hundred-and-twenty-five percent of three, the number three, you did not get four, but that's just because of rounding. The last note on this table is that, um, single-family developments in the R two and R three district, uh, we would treat, um, we would require open space as if they were R one C, uh, the, the reasoning there is that the R one C, um, I guess, single-family developments in the, in the R two and R three districts already follow all of the requirements of, of R one C, you know, it has the same minimum lot size, it has the same setback, all of those things. These are all the same slides that I used two months ago, so if, if, uh, a lot of this seems familiar, that's, that's the reason why, yeah. So just to kind of go over some of the things that are, that are here in this Article five, um, bri- more briefly than having me read them, uh, this would apply to urban residential development only, we would not, you know, once again, we wouldn't apply this to agricultural, uh, residential development. Those are already larger lots than cluster lots, where the lots are a little bit smaller, there's already an open space requirement booked into the cluster, uh, development regulations, um, so this would apply only to residentially zoned, uh, urban-style development. And sort of in addition to that, we would only apply it to developments of twenty lots or larger. The thinking there is just, you know, somebody has a large, uh, existing residential lot and they're looking to divide it into two lots, there's no, no point in making them also set aside some, you know, possibly tiny piece of land, uh, just for, just for the sake of meeting this requirement. The open space that's created has to be either maintained by the HOA, you know, that would be covered in their, in their covenant and restrictions or provide laws, I forget, uh, how they wanna, how that's best done, or it would have to be dedicated to, uh, to the appropriate city. Uh, the cities would not be obligated to take over this open space, so if, if that is what the, uh, developer intends, that's something they would have to work out with the city prior to the recording of the final plan. As far as the characteristics of the open space, um, you know, they're gonna need to designate whether this is sort of active or passive. Sort of the difference being, you know, active has, you know, specific activities that are typically associated with it, you know, you could install playgrounds, there could be, you know, some sort of sports fields, uh, whereas passive, uh, you can typically think of sort of taking advantage of natural features, you know, if there's a river or a creek, uh, along the prop- along the open space, you know, that's typically something that's gonna be more passive, you know, people could just use it for fishing, you're not necessarily gonna construct something on that feature for a specific use. Plats and plans need to show greenways and trails, especially those that are, you know, in the comprehensive plan, in the whitehead plan, you know, any other plan that might, um, be adopted by this body, you know, the applicant would be, of, of a prop- the applicant developing a property would be responsible for showing those on their plans. Um, and the, and the planning commission can also request that connections be made to, uh, trails, uh, that are, that are, that had been proved. Um, if green belts are established, uh, we would require a minimum width of a hundred feet. Um, as far as how far apart these, uh, open spaces or parks need to be, uh, we, we would require that, uh, each lot be within a half mile of open space, so you can't just, you know, plump all, if you have a, you know, a two-hundred-acre farm that you're developing into a subdivision, you can't plump all of the open space in one corner and then have people that are, you know, a half mile or possibly more, you know, depending on how the road lines, you know, that essentially would have to drive to the open space, you have to divide it up so that everyone has sort of equal access to it. The applicant would be required to provide the finished grade, uh, on, and, you know, any necessary landscaping, uh, to the sites. If the applicant shows, uh, trails of, of any kind of need to construct those, uh, and if they, you know, show, you know, other features, if they show a basketball court or swimming pool on, on a plan that comes before the planning commission, we would also ask that the applicant construct those as part of the plan. Uh, all the trails have to be accessible by pedestrians, uh, it could require a vehicle to reach them. Just, uh, same as ownership, the maintenance, uh, would be the responsibility of the HOA or the city if it's dedicated. We have designated, uh, on the last page, uh, of this, we have dis- or determined, or defined, I guess is a better word, uh, what would be sort of classified as inaccessible or unusable, like, or unsuitable land. That includes lands with, uh, you know, extreme, extremely steep slopes, um, land that is, that's within a sinkhole, uh, land in the flood plain, um, detention areas, wetlands, places like that. And so what we've done with that is that, you know, the applicant can count some of that land as meeting their open space requirement land they would have essentially set aside anyway, um, but that can only count correct to fifty percent of the open space that they provide. So at least fifty percent of the open space that we would be asking for, uh, with these regulations has to be, you know, somewhat usable, usable space. Uh, that's, that's the end of my, my slide. I did a, uh, one, one note, uh, before this, before this, uh, regulation would be, uh, sort of officially adopted, um, I will, I will add a, a, a fourth column, if you will, to the table on the last page, uh, that also includes, uh, the PUD percentages, uh, but they would obviously reflect the percentages that I, that I have on, on the slide in my presentation. And that's, uh, that's all that I have, unless you all had any questions.
Matt, what, uh, plan have we heard lately that this would work with? The urban, the one out here on twenty-five?
Yeah, the one on twenty-five, uh, I mean, the one, the one we heard earlier today, uh, would actually even apply, given that it has a, a residential zoning, um, you know, I looked briefly, uh, at their plan, uh, over the past couple of weeks. You know, it looked like, I think they were proposing to provide about six percent open space, I think it was. That'll probably actually go up a little bit now that they're eliminating that lot eighty, uh, and that would, that would fall within, um, the, the requirements that we would be looking for now. Some of that may change based on, you know, how much of that ends up being in the flood plain or, or the detention easement or not, but, um, you know, I, I would imagine they would still have enough, uh, open space to meet the. But, you know, I would imagine they would still have enough open space to meet the, the 4% that's required if the R1 needs, if that is R1B, correct? Well, still would probably fall within the 5% of the R1 zoning district.
This would have made it a little bit more stringent on the ones on 25, wouldn't it?
Yes, yeah. Because, and, and a lot of that was because.
What is that, what farm was that?
That was the Yancey Griffith property.
Right behind the schools.
It's now. The development, I think, is now called the Woodlands.
Yeah, okay.
So, looking back, say, at, at Mallard Point. So, the, all the lake area would be considered recreational area, is that correct? Although, there's lots on all of them, they do have access, you know, on the tail end of it. And the tennis courts and the playground area.
That would also count as open space.
That's the, the active part there. But that's not accessible probably within a half a mile.
Some of those, that's what I would think.
Yeah, but, but in the lake.
With, with something like that, yeah, you could, I mean, you could, you could build easements in, you know, sort of where the, you know, various points on the lake to allow for pedestrian access down to that common area, you just allow for more access.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, fundamentally, a plan like that probably wouldn't change all that much. Some, something like the Yancey Griffith, that one would probably change a little bit more, just because a lot of the area that they were providing as open space was in the back, and a majority of that was floodplain. So, with something like that, there would probably just be, you know, maybe a little pocket park somewhere in the middle or closer to the front. Or it's also possible, you know, in that scenario, that they would have sort of dedicated that area along US 25, just as open space that would be maintained by the HOA.
Charlie, I did some research, impact fees, which is sometimes a bad couple of words. It looked like in several years back, we had looked at possibly implementing them. Is, are they still illegal in the state of Kentucky?
The legislature hadn't seen fit to lay out a nice process. There's nothing, I don't believe, that says it would be illegal for us to devise our own. The problem is, no one's ever been willing to do that. Well, I'll just speak for here, we've not been willing to do that. There's enough case law out there that it could be done, and I think it would pass muster. It'd just be a lot better if the legislature would say, you do these 10 things, and you're good.
We were up on, when I was on planning zoning up north, it's, it's not something that a guy comes in, does a presentation in an hour, and then we go, yeah, we'll vote. It is about, I think it's either a year, 18-month process. I mean, it's a, it's a huge study, and it's, and there's an expense to it.
Well, it's, it's, it's pretty expensive. And that's, that's one of the reasons, I, I think, that Frankfurt hadn't stepped up. I mean, it's excellence thing, but it, it, it adds quite.
There may be a grant, I think, that could cover the expense. But we had brought this gentleman in, and you're talking, for me, it was probably 12, 12, 13 years ago. And they do the study, the growth study, and with us being the fastest grow, you know, growing county in the state of Kentucky, it's a fee that's passed on initially to the developer. And then, of course, he passes that on to the home buyer. And, and what it, it does is that fee covers green spaces and development of parks, si, uh, not sidewalks, but trails. I mean, it, it, and honestly, most people kind of say, no, I don't want an impact fee. But once you hear about it and understand it, and get the buy-in of builders and developers, it's actually a great thing. I mean, we ought to look into it, maybe get some preliminary information early on, and then maybe some.
One other thing, just, just to keep in mind, because all that's true. But in addition to that, and this is one of the things that kind of dampens spirits here on it, that would also include all sorts of municipal improvements, streets, sewer, I mean, all kinds of things. The problem often became, if any of the need is created by something other than that development, you know, such as roads, you know, that are serving it and so on, then the community's got to pick up that percentage. The community can't say, you owe 100,000, and you're going to pay for the work we haven't done on our street.
You can't use impact fees for past improvement, it has to be future improvement.
Well, but the problem is, if you don't have your current infrastructure at.
Certain standard.
Yeah, at, at, at acceptable standard, then the community's got to kick in money to bring it up to that.
No, it didn't make, it didn't make, no, it did not make.
Oh, the case law is pretty clear on that. So, as far as.
So, well, a little bit, but I mean, they covered open space. Maybe it's a conversation for later on, but it's something I think we need to visit.
Definitely.
About January.
I hear ya. All right, sorry, go ahead. We'll talk, Charlie, later, maybe over lunch.
It'll be a long lunch.
Go ahead, Matt, sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine. I mean, yeah, I.
Go ahead, I think you opened it for questions. It's a nice thing, after January.
Yeah, when I ain't around, y'all can talk about it all you want to.
I didn't know if any of you had any other question.
That's all I've got.
Any thoughts on this?
Thanks, Matt.
I think you've done a good job, Matt. It was nice trying to get this worked out, and hopefully it will eliminate a lot of problems there. You know, and those future plans coming up. Is there any more discussion on this?
If there's not, we need to close the public hearing.
You need a motion, I'll make a motion.
I think Stephen's still studying a little bit there.
Since this would be an ordinance change, we need to roll call and vote on it, too.
Do we need to close the public hearing first?
You got questions, Steve?
No, I'm just.
So I'll make a motion, close public hearing, do we need a motion?
No, I just.
Do we need a motion closing?
Oh, no, you can just close, close the public hearing.
So we're going to close the public hearing, and we'll have any further discussion, or we'll take a motion.
Do you think it's necessary for, we don't need further hearings beyond tonight, do we?
Well, we've been carrying this on for four months now.
We'll get on the city council agenda, and, you know, they feel like we need to do some public meetings, and we'll have to do it at that point, but I don't think so.
I think, I think what, what you're trying to accomplish here is, is just to reduce the confusion and the, make something a little more straightforward, so the developers know what, what's expected of them, or what we, what we expect.
I mean, my first, my first thing I thought of is, as soon as they say, oh, 3.5, well, let's see if we can get a variance and go for 4.5. You know, they're going to do that anyway, but this is a little bit better guidance, I think, on what we expect.
Yeah, especially when you go to R1CPUD here. And the PUDs, the flexibility becomes a, becomes an area.
Kind of underlaid to this, I think we need to make the developers present to us why they're justified in asking for a PUD. I mean, they get a lot of flexibility, but.
Well, that's one thing that really was, yeah, it was really left out. I mean, that's precisely what the PUD's supposed to be. This is how we're going to benefit you, and this is what we're proposed to receive in exchange. But it's truly a quid pro quo. We don't have that in our ordinance. Our ordinance simply says, we'll give you some flexibility. Well, but the flexibility's supposed to be at a benefit to the community, and that's usually kind of sparse. So, so no, that's precisely what PUD ought to be. Maybe I'll do that in January, too. Yeah, because ours is just, yeah, ours took kind of like the, the Cliff Notes version way back when. And we needed to have, you know, their obligations version included, and it really isn't.
Charlie, you'll draw something up and have it about January.
Get it back to me quick, Matt.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we need to go ahead and get a motion for Matt to go on and proceed with this to the city.
This would be a motion to recommend its adoption by the city council.
I'll make a motion to recommend adoption by the city council. Take it to the city council, I shouldn't say.
And that, that would be Article V, open space standards?
Correct.
And the changes to the zoning ordinance?
Yes, sir.
If I might, just so I don't forget it, one thing we haven't always done is when something is adopted, we need to make it clear when it was adopted, so people can kind of get an idea as to when things change and, and so on. Also, the document that actually goes to city council needs to have all of this underlined, because it's new. And then, and the stuff that moves, have it stricken here with a note that says, it is moved to Article 4, and so on. And then, a, a sub-note there that says, this was moved here from. Because quite often, we go back and look at it, and we really can't piece that together. And it's virtually impossible to go find it in all the various places where it might get stuck. So, we really need to document that. But, but otherwise, no, I, sounds excellent.
And also, you're, add the following to Article 2, the definitions, I guess. That was, it's not all, this is not all Article V, correct? You've got the one, one note at the end.
Yeah, the one, the one.
And accessible or usable land will go in Article 2 again.
And it'll be underlined there, too, with a note when that's done.
Motion by Mr. Solsky.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mifflin. It's a roll call. Mr. Solsky?
Yes.
Yes, vote is for the motion. Mr. Mifflin?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Next. Edgewater.
I guess I'm going to add, Matt spoke for about half an hour, so I think that would count as a justified.
I was going to ask.
Bingo!
I don't really care anymore.
Excellent point. Excellent point.
I guess there were two things. The first thing was Edgewater subdivision. It's in standing grounds, we got, we called the bond for some repairs to finish up the subdivision. You all approve. The bond money wasn't enough to complete it all. You approved the change in the flat to just do sidewalks on one side. Well, there's also a water, a spring at the entrance to the subdivision. That's, it's coming up, and it's following a water line, G M W's water line. So, then had the idea of them, reached out to them, to see if they can do the work, because it's right around all their infrastructure and they put it in. So, they're willing to do it, and just during your exonerating, just all their work, but we can do the work, we need to draw up an agreement, and we've done that. What GMW says for them to do the work, it's, it should be in front of you.
It, it's actually called memorandum of understanding.
Charlie, you read through this, you okay with this?
Oh, yeah, oh, I drew it up.
Okay, so you better be okay with it.
Yeah, I drew it up.
So we want to get this board approved, and then we can take it to their board to approve, and they'll know already that you approved it.
Yeah, we just thought this was kind of like an incentive to them, that this is already acceptable to us.
Yeah, I had read through it, I didn't realize you drew it up, though. Um, I felt okay with it.
Okay, the only thing I didn't remember was the name of the street. We probably ought to put that in there.
Edgewater Drive, but also put in the scope of work.
Yeah.
So, so the maximum worth paid is 15,000 or not?
Yeah, 15,000.
How much does that leave off the bond?
I think the bond was 60,000.
Yeah, there's about 45 or 47 left. Yeah.
So how's that work toward our sidewalks and the paving?
We should be able to do sidewalks on one side, I believe.
And the paving, too?
And, and paving.
That's good.
And clearly, if they get, just one other note. One reason why this should be an even better deal is this really should cost us a little bit less in going out for bids. They've already bid it, they've got all their unit prices with Derringer, and, and we really ought to come out a little bit better there. Secondly, it's their system, and it's just better when they work on their own system. It also keeps us from having to bid it out, review bids, draw up even more specific specs. This, this should save us a lot of time and maybe even a little money. And, and get the, get the work done well, because they're going to have to keep that work, which gives them incentive to, to make sure it's done just right.
Sounds good. Well, you need a vote on that, Joe?
Yes.
I need a motion on that. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
To accept this memorandum?
I'll second.
A motion and a second by Mr. Solsky, all those in favor, South? Those opposed? Motion approved.
The last thing is we have a bonding ordinance that requires, well, requires security for letters of credit from banks or institutions within 120 miles of the planning commission. So, we call, we usually hand over, or required to hand deliver them. So, we don't have to drive halfway across the country to call a letter of credit. We've got a developer that's banked with US Bank, and they have local branches, but US Bank won't allow us to hand deliver a letter of credit to a local branch to make us send it to St. Louis. So, it's, it's more than 120 miles, about 300 miles. But they're proposing that we be allowed to call the letter of credit through a fax and a phone call. So, since it's a variance from our, our regulations or our policies, we want to bring it to you.
I read through the letter of credit, and it looked like there's two of them. One for the warranty and maintenance of the public improvements for 37,080, and then the second one for 72,000, which is completion of sidewalks and paving. My thought was, as long as the legal verbiage is in compliance with our terms and conditions, I don't have a problem with it, as long as Charlie.
Yeah, yeah, the only, the only reason we had that 120 thing is because people insisted on letters of credit that had to be hand-delivered in order to be called. And we, the worst one I recall is over in West Virginia someplace, that's absurd. And they've agreed, they'll take it by fax. The only thing I would add, and, and we don't really have to vote on this part, just to approve it in general, the only thing I would add is not just that we call them to confirm their receipt, but I want them to confirm it by an email or something. Because, you know, we could say, yeah, we got a phone call, or we made a phone call, but then they could, wow, who'd you talk to? No, 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 no. So, they need to do that, and we're going to confirm that with them, too.
Usually fax machines will give you a confirmation fax if you requ, if you request it. And then, yeah, you can get an email back if you want.
Yeah, I just, they've just been kind of jerks, and not, not these guys. And in fact, nobody recently, since we put that, but that 120, that was arbitrary. Them saying they wouldn't do it without, that was arbitrary. This makes things, I think.
Do you look it over, you feel comfortable with it? I'd make a motion then to, I guess it would be a, not a variance, it would be a.
Well, no, just simply to approve this.
Yeah.
Just this one app.
This one application being outside 120-mile scope.
Yeah, yeah.
Or range.
Excellent, yes.
We've got a motion by Mr. Solsky, a second by Mr. Caldwell, all those in favor, South? Those opposed? Motion approved. That's it? Me and Jared.
Good evening.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, last question, I'm sorry, probably should ask, did it, is it like 120% of what we need, the bond?
It's 135%, isn't it?
Or the 100.
How do we say 135? When these days it's going to be 135?
No, no, for this letter of credit.
It's 125, then, yeah. We proposed that years ago, and it just.